Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. Thank you all for coming. The school board meeting of June 4th, 2019 is now called to order. The time is 6:03. At this time, we request that all electronic devices be put in silent mode. Also, we ask that you refrain from using flash photography. The agenda can also be found on the district's website, www.lee schools.net. Navigate to the Leadership tab and choose School Board. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and the district's vision, which is to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, one acknowledgment, public comment, consent action items, which include one item under executive services, nine items under academic services, 12 items under business services, three items under human resources, 12 items under operations, as well as two items for public hearing, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? I'm running a test.
Yes.
Second. Ms. Giavinelli and Ms. Fisher. Thank you. Please record your vote. Ms. Patrico will deliver the invocation, after which Ms. Fisher will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please rise for the invocation.
May you walk with God this summer, in whatever you do, wherever you go. Walking with God means walking with honesty and with courage, walking with love and respect and concern for the feelings of others. May you talk to God this summer, and every day and in every situation. Talking with God means praying words of praise for the beauty of creation, saying prayers of thanks for the friends and good times, asking God's help in all our decisions, expressing sorrow when you have failed. May you talk with God every day. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. The character word, and I'm sorry, Susan, I think I must have picked up the wrong papers. Do you have it there? No, she has the. This is when we need a student here. The character word for June is cooperation, working together for a common purpose. The quote is, "Alone, we can do so little; together, we can do so much," by Helen Keller. The design that you see on the screen was created by Ashley Stockinger, a rising 10th grade student at Astero High School. Okay, recognitions. Public comment is next, and Mr. Gabriel, will you please address the agenda item, Public Comment?
Yes, ma'am. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted it to me before the meeting began, you will be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the board this evening, Ms. Gittens, the board chair, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning comment are posted on the back of the room. The board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the public comment period, the board chair will address the assignment of any concerns or requests made during the public comment to the superintendent. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. Attacks on individuals or abusive comments are prohibited. In addition to clapping, booing, hissing are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow rules regarding the quorum should be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the lectern for Board Policy 1.11. Time per speaker is three minutes. Madam Chair, I have 12 cards.
Okay, thank you. And before calling on these cards, if there's anyone on the left side that has not submitted a card, please raise your hand. And on the right, yes, sir. Your name, sir?
Bob Valenta.
Bob Valenta. And when you finish speaking, then you make sure that you leave a card over there. Okay. Are you ready?
Yes, ma'am. First person is Burt Saunders.
For the record, my name is Burt Saunders. I'm with the Gray Robinson Law Firm, and I'm representing the Accelerated Learning Solutions. Your agenda item E1 is for approval of their contract, their new charter, and I just wanted to take the opportunity this evening to thank all of you for your courtesy over the years and certainly over the last several months as we discussed this particular application. I also want to just thank your staff. Jeff McCullers in particular has been great to work with over the years. I know he's retiring, he's going to be missed, and I just wanted to publicly thank him for all of his efforts over the years as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next person is Gerald Ripe. And if I mispronounce your name, please forgive me.
For the record, Gerard Ripo. I am here representing my three children, Gavin and Addison, and kindergartner that's getting ready to enter Edison Park Elementary, Dylan Ripo. We've had the pleasure of being at Edison for seven years now. There's a gentleman there that's a teacher that has recently been acknowledged that his contract is up and it's not being renewed, is Jamie Carmichael, the theater teacher. We were very sad to hear this news. He is Edison Park, you all know that school, it's a special place, it's like a family, and we're so grateful to be there. And when we think of that school, we think of Mr. Carmichael and we think of some of the other amazing teachers, and to learn at the end of the year that he was basically dismissed and is no longer able to work there as it stands today was very disheartening. When we told our kindergartner, incoming kindergartner, he cried. I just wanted to come and speak on his behalf, I wanted to show my support. You know, in an environment where you turn on the TV and there's always these discussions about needing teachers that are passionate and that do an effective job, he is one of those. And so, it's hard for me as a taxpayer and a father and somebody that takes that very seriously to think that a gentleman like this, who would like to stay despite the fact that he's been told he's no longer welcome, is in a position where he doesn't have that opportunity. So, I don't know the ins and outs of the school board, how that works, but I would ask that you consider looking at this case. If you have the power to do it, I would ask that you reinstate Mr. Carmichael. He's a special teacher. He is what you would want in the school system, and to have a decision made like this, which from an outsider looking in seems like a very clever way to fire somebody without firing somebody, I just don't think it's very honorable and it's not the right thing to do. So, I will ask, I will use June's month word, cooperation, and ask for your cooperation in at least giving this a fair look, and I think he deserves that, and I know all the students and the teachers also deserve that. Thank you very much.
Could you please repeat your name for me?
It's Gerard Ripo.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person is Brenneen Jindell.
Excuse me, excuse me, we can't have comments from the audience. Thank you.
And after her would be Tori Heathcote.
Good evening, thank you for giving up.
Excuse me.
Tori's even shorter. Okay. Thank you for this opportunity, for hearing us out. I wrote you all a letter earlier, and I'm not as eloquent of a speaker as Gerard, so I'm going to go ahead and just read that to you with my heart and passion. My husband and I had been wanting to get our children into Edison Park since our recent 5th grade graduate was in kindergarten. Due to our location, we were never so lucky. However, when we were able to secure my son a spot in the middle of his 3rd grade year, we jumped at that opportunity. Wow, what an amazing, unique school we are now lucky enough to provide for our children. As a district offering school of choice, we choose to drive 30 minutes to and from Edison Park every day. Our son was not doing awesome in his first two schools, not struggling academically but socially. However, he has done awesome at Edison Park. Who gets the credit for that? The teachers. The ones specifically that taught him arts and got him outside of his comfort zone. Mr. Carmichael being one of those highly influential teachers. Mr. Carmichael has not only been an asset to my children personally, but to the school overall. I was lucky enough to be chosen as a chaperone on their recent 5th grade field trip down to Key Largo. This was before I even had any knowledge that his contract was not being renewed. I was able to see with my own two eyes the pure adoration and undeniable love that these kids have for him. Sorry. He loves these kids so much, right back. They have personal jokes, he makes them laugh, and he is the one that is able to reel them in from utter chaos to a place of calm. Excuse me. Mr. Carmichael doesn't even know how badly Edison Park needs Mr. Carmichael. That's just the students. The teachers on this trip, every single one of them, I watched display friendship and respect toward him. He is by far a favorite in that school. To see Edison Park lose Mr. Carmichael would be a shame. We will be devastated if our daughter won't be able to receive the same amazing care and direction as Mr. Carmichael gave our son. You see, we were not provided any knowledge about this prior to the school year ending, let alone a reason for it. I believe that when a teacher is amazing, year after year...
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Has great reviews, shows up for the kids, writes and produces unimaginable plays that these kids can do consistently, and then he is abruptly taken from our school, we should know why. I just don't see it. Over 100 people in 72 hours in this petition don't see it. So, I'm just going to ask you today, can you please consider answering why he is being dismissed? If you cannot tell us this answer, please help us and tell...
Thank you.
Next person is Tori Heathcote. And after that would be Jenny Eisenhower.
They're crying.
Heathcote.
Good evening, I'm Tori Heathcote, and I am a parent of two children that attend Edison Park Elementary School. Oh, trying not to get upset. We are so shocked that Mr. Carmichael is no longer going to be at our school. I have two children, one that is attended and she graduated from Edison Park, and another one that's a rising 4th grader, who when I told him of the news, started crying. Both of my children came out of their shells with Mr. Carmichael. He is a fantastic educator. The students and staff at our school, he goes above and beyond what a normal teacher does. He writes plays, he gives those extra hours, he tutors, he's even given my children extra help after school for auditions, taped them for special auditions. I'm just going to be short and sweet. I just, he's been a part of our school for eight years, and I would just love for the superintendent to take another peek at why he's being let go. That was all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person is Tori Heathcote, I'm sorry, Jenny Eisenhower. And after Jenny is Janice Stillwell.
Hi, my name is Jenny Eisenhower. I am here representing the former parents of Edison Park. I had two children go through Edison Park, who both had the privilege to have Jamie Carmichael as their teacher in theater. He had such a huge impact on my children to the point that I have an incoming 9th grader and an incoming 11th grader who both are extremely into the local theater in Fort Myers. He really made them into the children that they are. And I was shocked to hear that he's no longer going to be there. And I don't even have a horse in the races, so to speak, because my kids aren't even there anymore. But I feel that Edison Park is such an amazing, special school that it is a detriment to that school to allow him to not be there anymore. And I too ask if you would please look into the reason why his contract was not renewed. I just feel like he's had such a huge impact that it's a huge loss for Edison Park, and it is something I think needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person, Janice Stillwell. After Janice is Lou Navrump.
Navrump.
Okay, Janice Stillwell, please, thank you.
Hi there, can you hear me? I'm going to make this quick and short. I was born and raised in Fort Myers, I went to Edison Park in 1955. There was a stage then, there's a stage now. A stage doesn't exist without the art, the drama teacher, and everything that goes together. It's a working effort. It's a team. The team's being destroyed. And I did some research this weekend on a very well-known book called The Principle of Change. Do we need principles? Do they play a role in schools anymore? This may not have anything to do with Mr. Carmichael, but the basic first rule of being a principal is that they are effective in team building. If some research is done by this board into why Mr. Carmichael is not being renewed, it may be found that it has something to do with the art department being able to get along with the academic department, and whether or not those first-year teachers that are in the academic department felt comfortable with the art department. And if this is about that type of effort, then eight years of a teacher should not be destroyed, he should be renewed. Thank you.
Next person was Lou Navrump, and after that is Amy Rohnner. Sorry.
It's all right. Can I tell my joke first, or are you going to start my time? All right, well, it's not really a joke, but, "Good evening, Superintendent, Board, Lou Navrump, former teacher, Lee School Board. I really had a nightmare last night, and it's true. I dreamed there was nothing at Suncoast Middle and I was back in teaching. Thank goodness for the late Jeff Summers' wife, Sue. She came in and at least gave me a TV. The only other people in there were students. I'm glad I woke up. I met with Commissioner Hammond on Monday. He was interested in the half a cent odd roundup. I still feel it's bogus. You all didn't tell us about the roundup, and the ballot language was changed, but that wasn't your fault." Mr. Hammond said, "I was happy to hear this. Dr. A.K., you taught him 7th grade science." I said, "Well..." He said, "You had a shark tank." I said, "Well, I taught 6th grade science, so I had to beat you." I told him I did rockets, balloons, and dissected a frog or worm, but it was really a good thing, and he was interested in that. I'm leaving you all a copy of what I call my white paper. I did some research. We'll skip the half a cent. Death of Leila Aikens. I still think we should look at privatization and run it like the Duval County system. I've given you the stuff, I'll leave it again, with Lee County 3rd, Jacksonville 2nd, and maybe with privatized, we won't have sex on the bus, which I don't know what the cover-up has been, but I think transportation, you know, that's not good. Bus routes, put the kids out on daylight for elementary. Forget the flashlights and the picnic benches of my friends out there in Cape Coral. They're goofy. Benches aren't going to survive, but we'll talk about that to the city council. I wanted bus huts, and I think you could put them in strategic locations if you would at least redo the bus routes, either do away with school choice and do a magnet system like Duval. Independent audit is needed, and I'm still in favor of that. There's been too many things, like the $3.9 million. Maintenance and custodial, they could be privatized as a savings. There seems to be misuse of maintenance equipment and theft of supplies in the custodial area.
Thirty seconds to go.
Okay. Communications, I think it's poor between city, county, and state legislative delegation. Board and superintendent seem to be hostile, they don't work with this. School district needs to create its own security force, like Manatee County. I don't think the ROs should be there, to tell you the truth. I'm going to leave you the stuff, and I feel sorry for Mr. Carmichael. There's no more continuing contract. You look at the principle, the...
Thank you, sir. Next is Amy Rohnner, and after Amy Rohnner is George Fox.
Hi, my name is Amy Rohnner. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Board of Directors of City of Palms Charter High School Incorporated. I work for consulting and professional assistance as business office services for three charter high schools that we currently operate in the district. We are on the agenda tonight as Item E2 and Item E4. City of Palms Charter High School is our school that's been open here for 12 years. Palm Acres in Lee High is being renewed tonight for 15 years to continue. Our school, Northern Palms in North Fort Myers, has been operating for four years, and we're being approved tonight on Item E4 to open a fourth school in the north part of Lee High, referred to as Palm River. Our schools afford the opportunity for kids that aren't able to complete their high school requirements by the age of 18 and get a diploma from the district to continue and have the opportunity to meet their requirements before the age of 21 and still get a high school diploma. We're open tuition-free to all students in the county, and we totally appreciate the support of the board, Superintendent Atkins, and especially, as Burt Saunders said, Jeff McCullers, who's retiring this year, working with the charter schools to be a solid part of the operations in this community. So, thank you again, and we appreciate the opportunity to serve in the future.
Next was George Fox, and after Mr. Fox is Raimy Hall.
That was a quick, that was a quick one. Didn't even let me get started, did he? Thank you. So, I wanted to come back this week, because last week I spoke and some of you let me know that you didn't quite understand what I was trying to get at, and so I wanted to come back this week and hopefully maybe say it a little bit better, if we could. Self-initiative is what I like to see this board create in the minds of the general public. You know, I just think the general public has a view of the school district in general that's not really right, you know, and that's just the way life is, you know, but I'd like to see the board work at getting the public to understand that what you're working on is, no matter what a kid does, you're encouraging them to be self-initiative. And, I mean, in my life, that's what makes the difference. You know, it's the only way that I know how to be, and so I wanted to, you know, say my piece here with the board and Dr. Atkins, and I think everyone of you know exactly what I'm saying. And collectively, how can the board get the public to understand that that's what you're trying to accomplish? And it's a simple word, self-initiative, and everybody understands it and they get it. If you say, "What we're trying to get these kids to do is not only come to school and work, but on their, you know, when they leave the school, what they're doing," that you're preparing them for... that you're preparing them for their life." I think that goes over better with the public than trying to explain, you know, the many good programs that you have here. I don't know why that would be, but it just seems that way. And I hope, I hope this clears up what I was trying to say and where I would like to see the board go. Working on its public relations, might be the way to say it, or its relationship with the public, is that you send one of your kids to our school, we're going to encourage them to use their, whatever their dream is, whatever their passion is, to use their self-initiative to accomplish that. Some kids may be stronger at math and English and get it, you know, quite easily. Others may not. So, those kids who do not, at least you can tell them, you know, get, you know, get busy. Use that drive that comes within you. You have to find that and make that work for you. And I think that would be a big plus with the public in the way they view you and the way they support you.
Mr. Fox, 30 seconds.
Thank, thank you, I'm done. I thank you very much, and have a great week.
Next is Raimi Hall, and after that is Jacqueline Perez.
Guys, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Teachers are the lifeblood of our community. Both of my kids sat under Mr. Carmichael at Edison Park. He was a phenomenal drama teacher. They learned a lot from him. He also helped instill confidence in both of my children, who are not actors, they don't perform in plays outside of school, but they did it at Edison Park, and they loved it. And that's a very part of edu, that's a vital part of education, I believe. There's more and more stories like this that I'm hearing this year. Somebody works eight years, they walk in, and boom, they don't have a job. I would ask this board, these teachers need actual contracts. To think that we're going to attract and maintain good teachers at the low pay we offer them, I mean, we are going to continue to have a teacher shortage, and they all know. They can be fired without cause, with cause, for any reason. I would ask this board to work this summer and make a motion tonight to pay teachers more, put in an actual contract that they can depend on. If we want these teachers to devote their lives to our children, we owe them more than a one-year contract. Maybe if Mr. Brown weren't so busy investigating a board member, he could handle some of these situations. I'm very disturbed with what I saw in the media and that memo that was leaked to NBC. How does that happen? I hope you guys will be talking about that tonight. I hope that you'll ask the attorney how that happens. We need to see change here. I know it's summer, but you guys have a lot of work to do. Our teachers deserve more. Many wanted to come here and speak tonight that have been dismissed, but they're afraid. They're afraid if they come here and speak, they won't be hired at any other school. And you know what? They're right. And the ones that I spoke to, I told them, "Don't come speak. You just can't." It's sad. I don't know where the Talc rep is, I don't know why he's not up here asking for better pay, better contracts. It's disturbing, guys. We have a teacher crisis. People do not want to work here. You guys have to do something. You need to look into what happened at Edison Park, not with Mr. Brown's department. He's, he's busy investigating school board members. Get a real investigation. See what is happening in our schools. Who is holding principals accountable? Who? We need a path for teachers when they are let go that offers them a resolution.
30 seconds.
Okay. We need a path for teachers that offers them a resolution. They need to have an advocate. The complaint form, it doesn't go anywhere. Never does. You guys were elected to protect our children and be watchdogs of this community. Do your job.
Next person is Jacqueline Perez, and Carla Fox is after that.
Good evening, Board. I wanted to come in this evening and speak to you about the, about Andy Brown's, let me take, get my breath, whistleblower complaint. I reviewed that, which was used in an ethics complaint, and every allegation on there is false. In one of his comments, he stated that an IAQ contract was pulled after a letter from, of T. Francell came in. The pull was actually done on January 9th, before the letter arrived. The other comment he made was, there was a vote that three board members voted against on February 12th. That vote was taken on the 26th. It's numerous charges of false allegations where he included my name. You're responsible for this employee for whatever time he spent, months and months, weeks of taxpayers' monies, of doing what? A fake investigation that I had to pay for, that all these people paid for, and it's all lies. The other thing I'd like to address is, last week when I was here, one of your vendors, Fresh Air Solutions, Ed Siofani, identified himself to me in the hallway and threatened me, told me not to speak about his invoices. And this is illegal. It's my First Amendment right to speak about whatever contractor and question bills, invoices, payments. And I'm going to enter a letter that he left at my home, which is a violation of my privacy and my right to come here and speak. I should be able to come to a board meeting without feeling threatened, without having somebody follow me home, without having somebody tell me I can't speak about their contract. All of you are responsible for that, that type of attitude. He was very chummy with Andrew Brown in the overflow room right before he attacked me. And I want that looked into. I want an investigation done on his behavior and Andrew Brown.
Thank you, next is Carla Fox.
Good evening. Thank you, Superintendent, Board members. And first off, happy end of the year, happy summer. Hope you have some good rest, some good challenges this summer. We do have challenges. Today was a very good word for the month, cooperation. Every single one of us that teach, teach that we have to have cooperation in order to get our students where they need to be. And what we are looking for is, we are looking for the Board to be those leaders in the community, so that they can help express to the community what is actually happening in our schools and what our schools are doing for our students. And our schools are doing wonderful things for our students. I know that you all know that. And so, we've got to communicate that in a clearer manner, because most people think because they have been a student that they know what teaching is about and what school is about now. They don't. Teaching and schools have changed so much in the past number of years, and what we do here is so different than most people ever experienced in their schools. Between our IB programs, our ACE programs, our AP programs, between the different magnet schools we have, all of the different accreditation programs we have, we have so much that people really don't understand. And it's going to take a massive effort to get everyone out there to really understand what goes on in the classroom, what goes on in our schools. And we need cooperation among you to be able to get that message out jointly and to everyone, so that they can become supporters of the school system again. It's been a long, hard road that, it seems that there's been a, how would you say? Over the years, public schools have gotten a bad rap that I don't believe is deserved. And it's up to us, all of us, to get back out there to support our students, to support our stu, teachers, and to support our schools. And to put out there what really is going on with our students, because the students come first. Thank you, and have a great summer.
Madam Chair, that's the last card that I have. There was a gentleman who didn't fill out a card?
Yes.
Bob Valenta. You don't have to interrupt me at 30 seconds, I can see the lights. I've been away from meetings for a while, and it looks like maybe that's got to change. It sounds to me, from what I'm hearing, like we need to investigate the investigators. I want to thank some of the board members, especially Ms. Giovinelli, for standing up for the children, even if some in the administration have other agendas. I myself have come under fire for speaking up and speaking out, but that won't stand. The last time I was here discussing the out-of-control cost per student, even when compared to the overinflated New York costs, only to be shamed by Dr. Atkins. My point that night was that even though cost of living in New York is much higher, our cost per student is higher than theirs. And your point was, "You can't compare to New York dollars." Well, that was my point, sir. You can't compare to New York dollars. I mean, you can, okay? It's called an exchange rate. And by the exchange rate, we should be at about half of what we are. My point was missed. Clearly, the problem is that Lee County is such a large district that it is problematic to manage it. I will be supporting a constitutional amendment to change that. Lee County should be five separate districts, so that it can be manageable. In the meantime, we desperately need an outside forensic audit. Thank you.
That's all the cards and speakers.
Okay, thank you. Let me begin with the support for Mr. Carmichael. And if he is listening in, he should be very proud that so many people feel so aware of his abilities. And I'm going to ask the superintendent, I know there was some follow-up from an email. I'm not sure if you're aware that if you can give any other input or how we can handle as far as the situation.
Well, I think, really, let me just say this. I do know that, that, you know, the principal has worked with Human Resources on that, and I believe board members were sent an email. Dr. Pruitt has indicated that she would be more than happy to make herself available to you if you wanted to discuss it further.
To the board members or anyone else?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, all I can say to all of you, thank you for coming tonight on his behalf. We will look into the situation and be able to give you whatever answer we can. There, with human resources issues, sometimes there are legalities as to what we can say. I personally do not have an answer for you, so just know that it has been noted, and we will in some way communicate with you to let you know. And thank you for the support, though. Mr. Sanders, thank you so much for coming. And the part I want to reflect on as well is your thank you to Mr. McCull, Dr. McCullers. And we are going to be very sad very soon that he will be leaving us as well with the wealth of knowledge, and thank you for bringing that forward. Ms. Rummer, is it, from City of Palms? I believe she's still here. Okay, there she is. Thank you for your statements about City of Palms, and we appreciate the services that you have that can help our students to succeed as well. Mr. Fox, where is he? Oh, there he is, he's hiding over there. Okay. Thank you for your explanation. And the comment I have for you is what we state in the beginning of the meeting, that our mission in the district is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential. So, it is a part of our strategic plan, it is our mission, it is our vision to make sure that students do succeed. And I do understand what you're saying, self-initiative. And I think as we instill in them just the ability to turn the light on for themselves and understand and see things and learn, learning is self-initiative. And we hope to instill that in all of our children, but thank you for explaining it. Ms. Hall, the teacher path to resolution, basically, I think that's going to be what Talc and Spalc and, and that we do as, as a bargaining unit when we get together once a year and talk about their contracts. And Dr. Atkins, do you have any other comments on that?
Well, just remember that, that the professional service contract, that was something that was stricken from Florida law, you know, it used to be a part of Florida law. Now, and I can't remember the year off the top of my head, but teachers that were hired after a certain date would no longer be eligible for an annual contract. I do know that, that our bargaining team and Dr. Pruitt did negotiate some language that did provide some protection at one time, and again, then legislation changed again that made it even more difficult for districts to be able to seek their own way. And I know that they continue to work with our bargaining unit to try to, to work out as much of a local control as we can as it relates to protectionism for teachers that receive an effective or highly effective evaluation. So, a big chunk of that, this for everybody's edification, is that the professional services contract and even the old continuing contract are something that, that are no longer available to us to be able to do locally, so we look for local solutions that would help. This is a Florida issue, because it impacts all teachers across the entire state of Florida.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Ms. Perez, I don't know if she's still here, but the comment I'd like to make with that is, we are a public entity, and this also kind of goes for Mr. Valenta, that everyone is, is welcome and free to speak. And like we said, we do have First Amendment rights, and no one is shut down for what they believe or think or feel. That's not the American way. So, when you feel that you want to come and express your thoughts and feelings and as well leave anything to go into the minutes, then we appreciate your comments, as long as, and I say this to everyone, as long as you come respectfully. And I know, when I was in college, one of the things, a class I took, the teacher said, "If you object to something that someone is saying, you have to have something else to put in its place." So, if you come with a suggestion that something may not be what you think is right, then give a suggestion as to how it can be fixed. Ms. Fox, you were talking about message to our community, that our public schools need our support and need to be, you know, boosted up there, and that's very true. Some people will say that we are under attack. I don't know if it's really under attack, but we need to do our work, and we need to make sure. The way we look at public schools and private schools and charter schools, there's something, it's America, there's something for everyone. And it's, it's not one size fits all. So, we provide an opportunity for all students, like I said before, to achieve their highest potential. I think we covered everyone. Now, we move on to the approval of the action items in the agenda under consent. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven days prior to the board meeting. We're expected to review all the material. We have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent, or staff is necessary, with any questions that we have and regarding any recommendations. Some of these items have been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Someone mentioned to me that all we do is rubber stamp at the action meeting, and that's not actually the case. What we do is have workshops and briefings where we discuss and we have staff come in that will tell us and answer our questions, so that when we do come to this point, it is an action meeting, so that everything we've gleaned and talked about, and we vote on at this time. Board members, are there any agenda items that you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business or tabled items? Any polls?
I have none this evening.
I have none.
I have none.
No, thank you.
I have none.
I have none.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve- Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent items with no exceptions?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Fisher and Ms. Giovinelli, please record your vote. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we're going to close the regular meeting. It's a formality that we were, yes. I'm sorry. What did I do?
I think Dr. Atkins is trying to get you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to take a moment to introduce the people that were approved with the consent agenda.
Oh, did I miss that?
If that's okay.
Oh, okay. Okay. I'm sorry.
Thank you. First off, Carol Frank, Edgewood Academy, from Assistant Principal to Principal. Then next, Brian Gibson, East Lee County High, Assistant Principal to Lee County Jail, Southwest Florida Juvenile Detention Center, Vince Smith Center, Principal.
A Principal, yeah.
And Robert Mazzoli, Rob Mazzoli, Edgewood Academy Principal, to turnaround Principal Tropic Isles or moving to Tropic Isles Elementary as Principal. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is that it? Okay. There have been questions about other principals. I understand that that will be coming on our next meeting on the 20th.
Yeah, we hope to have at least two more appointments at that time.
Okay. All right. Just in case. Okay. Now, we are ready for the public hearings. Before closing the regular meeting and opening the public hearing, do you, Dr. Atkins, do you have recommendations for the public hearing?
Yes. First recommendation is approval of the 2019-2020 Student Code of Conduct for grades pre-K through five, grades six through 12. The Student Code of Conduct, they are reviewed annually and adopted to provide guidelines to establish procedures to address inappropriate behavior and to ensure safe and orderly environment for all students and staff. The effective date of the adoption shall be June 5, 2019. The second recommendation I have is approval to adopt the 2019-20 Code of Conduct for adult students. The 2019-20 Code of Conduct for adult students is also reviewed annually and adopted to provide guidelines for the same reasons. Those two recommendations are what I have this evening.
Okay. And at this time, the public will, did I make sure to resign the other meeting? Okay. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on these two items only. That's the Code of Conduct for K through, for pre-K through five and grade six to 12, and Code of Conduct for adult students. Is there anyone on my right that would like to speak on the Code of Conduct? Anyone on my left? Okay, thank you. So, now I will close the public hearing, and we return to the regular board meeting, June 4, 2019. Dr. Atkins, will you please restate your recommendations for this evening's items? Did you, is there anything else? Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair. The first item, again, approval to adopt the 2019-2020 Student Code of Conduct for grades pre-K through five and grades six through 12.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved. Second.
Okay. We have Ms. Fisher, and I think I heard Ms.
Morgan.
Morgan. Any discussion? Okay. And motion carries seven zero. And, Dr. Atkins, please address the Adult Code of Conduct.
Yes. Second item is approval to adopt the 2019-2020 Code of Conduct for adult students.
Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Ms. Jordan and Ms. Giovinelli. Any discussion? Okay. And motion passes seven zero. Okay, moving on to other business, as board member comments, I will go this way, Ms. Giovinelli, then Ms. Fisher.
I would like to make a quote, a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King. "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in the moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy. Our lives begin, at the end of the day, we become silent as things that matter. In the end, if we remember that not words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." I would like to express my concern most recent, regarding the most recent audit. We had a duty to ensure that the students, employees, and taxpayers of Lee County are treated fairly inequitably. The 3.9 million in question could have saved many teachers and support staff positions provided much-needed academic enhancements to our schools for the benefit of our students versus reducing staff positions, increasing class size, and cutting programs. I was elected to oversee this Lee County School District, including the superintendent and district spending. I will not apologize for asking hard questions, even when others do not. It's easy to distract the public or even fellow board members with demeaning rhetoric and distractions. These tactics squander valuable hours from our children. My number-one priority. My job is to provide oversight of the district, and I will continue to do my job, no matter what. On behalf of the children, staff, and citizens of Lee County, I will not stop asking the hard questions. Thank you for allowing me to serve this community. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Fisher.
Yes. So, thank you. I finished up the school year with the Cape Coral Technical College graduation, which was very moving, and we have people entering the workforce well-trained and really in need. I had an opportunity to go to the ALVA School, which is truly a neighborhood school, for their end-of-the-year school luncheon, and that also was amazing. I cannot wait to go back when the kids are back in August to see what is happening next there. One of the last things I did was go to the Cape Coral Police Department Do the Right Thing Scholarship Luncheon, where students were honored and provided with $1,000 each to use for their college educations. And their stories were those of persistence and overcoming adversity and hanging in there. And I really was grateful to the Do the Right Thing program for continuing to recognize the hard work of our students. I just wanted to make a comment on the Code of Conduct that we approved this evening. It included improvements, and this year I was particularly impressed because it included input from students who worked directly with the Code of Conduct team to make improvements and bring us up to speed into the 20th century. So, I'm really glad about that, and it is going to help us to focus on getting children who are struggling and have some issues behaviorally the help that they need rather than just putting them, you know, into a punitive situation that renders no good outcome. Congratulations to our new administrators and those who were transferred. I know that they'll work hard. When our partners at the Palm charters talked, they wanted to thank Dr. Jeff McCullers, and I would like to say it's been an honor and a pleasure to know him and to work with him. He is completing his senior year, and he's graduating to retirement now. And I wish you Godspeed and lots of fun adventures, and I know you will. So, God bless you. As we work, go into the summer, we will be doing a lot of work on our budget and on planning for next year, and I hope that people will take advantage of the opportunity to get a little bit of respite, stay healthy, get plenty of exercise, and stay hydrated. That's real important. And I would like to say that, Mrs. Giovinelli, I need some clarification regarding that whole audit thing because I feel like I'm missing some information that you may have. So, I don't know if you want to address that later on this evening, but I feel like I'm really missing something. I spent hours poring over all the information, and I'm not sure exactly what it is that the problem is.
Well, actually, I can, if you, if I can, may I clear that now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. So, I actually talked to the auditor, Micah Rogers, and we were not cleared of anything. So, the audit stands as it stands. I will wait for the DOE to respond back. I feel confident with the responses that maybe that the DOE will not hold us accountable for that 3.9 million as much, and I'm confident that that will change. I spoke to the attorney just recently, and he feels confident in that as well. So, I look forward to hearing from the DOE. But we were not cleared from anything from the audit. The audit, number two, stands, and the DOE, the letter on May 16, clearly states that they agreed with the auditor. So, I don't know, that's pretty clear in that. And you can call Micah Rogers yourself because I talked to him three times, and he was very clear that we were not cleared of that finding.
Understood. But I still think that after reviewing all of that information, which took me hours the other day because I think we got 11 emails because it was so much information, and so I'm still confused about what the impetus is. I understand that we have an audit exception and that we're waiting for final determination by the auditor's office. However, the evidence there is pretty comprehensive.
Well, the auditor didn't agree with the way the invoices were and the, some of the, not information, the scope of work was not clear on the invoices. So, I mean, like I said, call the auditor. That's what I did.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Jordan?
Sure. Well, I would just like to say we are into the summer, and that does not mean that our work is done. We have a lot of work to do still, and I look forward to doing that. And I would like to remind everyone that about the summer feeding program because I think that's very important. We do have several locations throughout the county that are making sure that our children are being fed, so we have to be mindful of that. And if you have the opportunity to stop by, I plan on doing that and being there to help in the community. And then also, I wanted to, oh, and we have pictures from our.
Right.
This was a search graduation at Galisano. These children were amazing. The child that we're standing with, he was in a shell. He would never speak to anybody, and now he's told his parents, he's running his own place, he's moving out, he's doing everything. It was really heartfelt, and even, it's really emotional when you think about what these kids have done, and I'm just so proud that I was a part of that. We also had the opportunity to, the red carpet, the Student Film Festival, our students here, Lee County. Thank you, Jason.
Yes.
And I had the opportunity to actually judge this, some of the filming, and it was really hard. There were hundreds and hundreds. And just seeing what our kids do is just amazing. I'm ready to do one myself. I'm all hyped up telling my grandkids, yes, you're doing one next year. We just have to figure out what the theme is. Is it the norms or what will it be? But I'm just really impressed by our children, and like Mrs. Fox said, we need to make sure that people know what our kids are doing, what our students are doing, what our teachers are doing. And these are just some of the things that they're doing. There are so many things. And I'm just, you know, glad to be a part of it and wish everyone a restful summer. I'm going to be, stay busy, so I hope to see you out there.
Ms. Patrica?
So, I'm going to have to read some of this stuff because some of it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But I do want to recognize staff. Is Mr. Davis here? Mr. Davis, you and your staff for the Learning Impact Platinum Award from the IMS Global Learning Consortium.
Oh, right here.
He's Urbana today.
I think that's good. The Platinum Award is the highest honor available and the only global expert-judged competition that recognizes breakthrough implementations of education technology. Like, those words describe Mr. Davis and his team. Breakthrough, technology, global, expert. We at this district, I remember when I was campaigning and before I was campaigning, I would watch school board meetings, and I would hear Ms. Morgan talk about the fact that we were data-rich but analysis-poor. Now, we are data-rich and analysis-rich. Thank you, Mr. Davis and your team. It seems that we are the leaders for interoperability among instructional technology. I think I understand what that means. Trey Davis said it best, quote, "Our district's Learning Impact Platinum Award demonstrates our leadership and commitment to empowering students and teachers with actionable insight from real-time instructional data and analytics." Thank you, thank you, thank you for bringing us to where we are and putting us in a place where I believe we are far ahead of most educational institutions across the country. Thank you. My next comment is about Representative Spencer Roach and the interactions that I've had with him at public events over the past several weeks. Perhaps unbeknownst to most of us, Representative Roach is visiting schools. He's invited by teachers. Ms. Fox, he's invited by teachers. It's a wonderful thing when our teachers invite our representatives into their classrooms. And at one meeting in particular, I believe Ms. Jordan was there, he said, "School board members, Ms. Patrica, I hear you. Teacher pay is not high enough." He's also interested in becoming more involved in our foundation events, and I think there's a real opportunity there for us to build upon the relationship that was started when he sponsored our Grow Your Own. So, I'm excited for the future with Representative Roach as part of our delegation. I want to repeat my appreciation for Chair Gittens in Thursday's meeting. This pre-agenda thing that we're doing, I think, is really providing the board with much better understanding of where each other, where we sit when we come into an action meeting. And Ms. Fisher will ask a question that I didn't even think of, and perhaps I might ask a question that others might not think of, and I just think it makes it much more clear to all of us. So, as we get used to that, I'm finding tremendous value in it.
Thank you.
I want to thank the superintendent. I want to thank finance. I want to thank maintenance staff and all other staff that contributed, including our board attorneys, to the response letter to the DOE. Ms. Fisher, I believe you just mentioned how very thorough it was. It was incredibly thorough.
Incredibly.
Incredibly thorough, and it took me hours to review the information as well. I was really impressed with the depth of information provided, and I was also impressed with the legal arguments in the letter. I'm not remembering a time that we had that kind of advocacy in the board attorney office, so thank you. And finally, I just wanted to follow up with this board about the integrating the quadrant exercise that we did in our unconscious bias training into the strategic plan and make sure that that's on our radar for follow-up at some point. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn.
Okay. First of all, I would like to say thank you to all of our teachers and all of the instructional leaders at the various schools, as well as our staff here that helps to make their jobs, well, sometimes easier and maybe not all the time easier, but help to ensure that our students get the best possible education. As a 38-year educator myself, I know that the teachers have a lot of stuff that they do in the summer, but find some rest and relaxation in between. I think often we forget support staff, like our bus drivers, who often had to double up on schedules in getting our children safely to the schools. I know we've had some issues, very serious tragic issues this past year, and hopefully moving forward, we'll find some solutions to making sure, to really ensuring that our students have a safe journey to school. Food services for feeding the kids. kids, and even to all the maintenance workers, especially those in, in the schools. And I know that they work especially hard in the summer polishing those floors, et cetera. I also want to read a statement that I put together because I've been very disturbed at some recent information that has come out in the media. And I'm just going to read what I wrote because otherwise I tend to be somewhat even more verbose. "Eight days ago, I learned via a phone call from NBC2, an NBC2 reporter, that a former board member had filed a formal complaint against a current board member. That reporter forwarded to me a copy of the complaint that was sent to the Florida Ethics Committee. The complainant's document was dated Friday, May 24th, and it contained some very specific information that led me to wonder how that individual was privy to such specialized details. Last Wednesday," so not even a week ago, "I saw for the first time on the NBC2 website, a letter dated March 14th from Andrew Brown, Director of Professional Standards and Equity. Mr. Brown's letter was sent to HR Chief Dr. Angela Pruitt requesting whistleblower protection for himself. Attached to the letter was a document, the content of which bore striking resemblance to the ethics complaint of May 24th. Mr. Brown's document acknowledged that his department had submitted individual copies of an investigative report, a summary report, directly to each board member. Unknown to board members, at least to this board member, each report contained a uniquely numbered watermark specifically dedicated to each individual board member. I received the referenced water, I, I'm sorry, I retrieved the reference watermarked email, and I located my watermark, which, of course, I hadn't noticed previously. It was the number five. The watermark document published in the media was marked with a two. The ethics complaint alleged that board member in question had received a watermark marked four. So, that begged the question of who belongs to the other watermarks. I think we got an earlier answer right before this board meeting about number two. The purpose of this statement is not to defend or contest the ethics complaint or to defend or contest Mr. Brown's document. That is not the purpose. It is to vigorously protest the covert use of watermarks by an executive district staff member to monitor board members' communications. This action was not at the direction of the board. First of all, and I'm going to be saying this and then pausing to ask these questions again, I want to know definitively who authorized this clandestine action. I'm going to, and I gave our board attorney a heads-up on this yesterday, asking him to weigh in on whether this action is within the scope of the function of the Department of Professional Standards and Equity in its relationship to the Lee County Board of Education. And I want to know definitively if there are any state statutes, statutes that have been violated. And before I get to that, I just want to say that I have been working diligently to feel trustful and trusted by this administration. I feel like personally, speaking from, for myself as an individual, that this action, the action of putting a watermark on a communication sent to me, a board member, has set back any of my personal efforts to develop and build a trusting relationship. It set it back immeasurably. So, I'm going to turn to the board attorney, and I'm going to say, I'm going to be looking for who authorized this. And I also wanted you to weigh in on whether this action is within the scope of the function of the Department of Professional Standards in its relationship to the Board of Education of Lee County Schools.
So, Madam Board Member, I guess I have to start by saying simply that, to the extent I don't know who authorized it, I'm not aware of who did that, or, or whether or not it was by investigation or some other purpose that it was being conducted. I have no idea. To the other question as to whether or not there might be a violation of a law, it's not like a recording where you have, if you were to record someone without their knowledge of that, that's a statutory violation that has penalties. There's no violation or, to my knowledge or ability of understanding, that one exists as to relates to that.
Okay. So, what you're saying is that if it were a recording, and in my mind, I made an analogy to a couple people on this, that it was like if somebody had called me and they were secretly recording what I was saying, that that would be a violation. So, what you're saying is you don't know if the written with a watermark, if covertly, without notifying board members of the possibility that this might happen, you don't know if that violates anything. If you don't, could you find out for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. But, I want to, I want to be clear. There's state statutes that provide for recordings without the knowledge of persons in the state of Florida. There are none that I'm aware of that relate to the topic that we're talking about now, watermark or markings of a document or whatever the purpose might be for that. I'm just not aware of it. Like, a check has markings on it, it's identified, you can find it by the number. There's other things that might be that way. There is nothing that I'm aware of that would, that applies in the context of what we're talking about here.
Okay. What about the other part of my question you're weighing in on whether this action is within the scope of the function of the Department of Professional Standards and Equity?
I stepped back, yes, ma'am. I stepped back to my started, where I started was whether, what the purpose was and why it was being done. I don't, I, I can presume certain things, but I'm only guessing. I do not know what the purpose was or why it was conducted.
I'm, I'm not asking the purpose. I'm asking...
If it was, there might be an explanation is what I'm getting to.
Okay. That's not what I'm asking. I'm going to give you an analogy that might help. An analogy would be, there have been many, many times that board members have pointed to other board members and administration has pointed to board members saying, "Stay in your lane. This is not within your authority." So, what I'm asking you is, to use an FSBA phrase, was this in the lane, from your knowledge as one who is educated in school policy, was this in the lane of an executive department in terms of investigating covertly and monitoring school board communications?
I will, I will put it this way. It's something that I'm not accustomed to ever seeing, that kind of activity or action.
And could you find out?
I would be happy to investigate.
Okay. Please investigate it because just because you've never seen it doesn't indicate one way or, or another. So, I'm going to put this out there officially now, and if I may ask Dr. Atkins if he could tell us who authorized this.
Well, in my opinion, as you know, there is a complaint that's been filed with the Commission of Ethics. And not knowing the status of that complaint, I don't feel it would be appropriate for me to comment on any type of investigation, and this would be a part of that.
So, you can't say who authorized that department to take that action?
Again, I said, I don't think it would be appropriate for me to comment.
Okay. I, I want to end this with saying, I know that's pretty serious and pretty, let's say, assertive of me as a board member, but I take my job very, very seriously. And if we are going to, to use the word of the month, cooperate, it's a two-way street. When we have people pointing fingers at certain board members, that goes nowhere for cooperation. I am working on being more cooperative, being more trusting. But, when things like this happen, including how certain people, which I won't get into, knew some very specific details on who owned each of those numbers on the watermark, which was not publicized, I don't know that was public record, I really, really have my trust shaken. And we must do better than that if we're going to move forward. And I want us to move forward for the stakeholders of Lee County and especially for the sake of our children. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
So, my, my comment to what was just said is, first of all, I believe it's the responsibility of the board to direct the board attorney and the superintendent to take an action, not the responsibility of an individual board member to direct the board attorney or the superintendent to take a particular action. Secondly, with response, with respect to the 3.9 million, which keeps coming up, and allegations were made tonight about the fact that the money could have been spent on other things and the operating fund. Ms. Fisher, you did attempt to ask questions about this.
Yes.
There is a volume of information about it. There is no loss of funds. It is simply a disagreement about, between the state and the school district about the interpretation of statute when it comes to allocating an expenditure to operating or capital, period. That's all it is. And we have made it very clear that we are not going to take any, we will not be penalized by the state for failure to make the necessary adjustments. There is no reason to continue to bring this up at the board table. It is a settled matter. I, I just, I'm tired of it. I did watch the conclusion of the May 30th workshop, which I was unable to finish attending because I had a prior commitment. And I'd like to make a couple of comments regarding the discussion about advisory committee policy change. First of all, it was clear to me from watching the meeting that there's a lack of clarity within the board about what the role of advisory is. Some people believe that the subject matter experts should be providing the board with information in areas in which the board has a decision-making authority. For example, budget construction, curriculum, district strategic plan. Those subject matter experts make recommendations, explain processes and outcomes of the board decisions to the public. That's one way of looking at it. Another way is generalists who become educated about workings of the district in a specific area, advisory area, curriculum, finance, construction, they ask questions for clarification, they make recommendations, and they educate the public about the subject area. So, I don't think the policy clearly lays out what the expectation is. If it's for both, then I think we also need to say that. So, that's my comment about the lack of clarity, and I don't think we should change the board policy until we really know what it is that we expect these committees to do. Secondly, with respect to the video component, historically, I believe, and I don't know if there's anybody here, you might be able to correct me, Dr. Atkins, the construction advisory committee was taped because at the time, that's when we were purchasing a lot of property and people, and the construction advisory committee was making recommendations to the school board about the acquisition of property. And it was felt that it was prudent at that time because those recommendations were being made to the board to film that group. That's the only time filming took place. And that's why it's no longer, it stopped when we stopped acquiring property. In response to what Ms. Gittens said, she said, "We've already made a decision." No, we have not made a decision. We had a discussion, and we consented to proceed with a process for implementation of videotaping. But, that was not a policy decision. That policy decision still needs to be made, and we need to vote on it. And because, and several members, several committees have weighed in on their discomfort with the recording process and believe the change in process will impact outcomes. So, my comments would have been, I will not support a change in policy until the, the roles and expectations are clarified. Also, I believe that the application must require applicants to agree not only to being taped for publication, but understanding that, that, that tape will be on a public access platform over which the district and its staff have no control. And until those, those things take place, I will not be supporting a recommendation for change in board policy with respect to advisory committees. And those are my comments.
Thank you. I'll start with your comment about the advisory boards since that was just done. The consent of the board was to move forward with the action of the videotaping. And in order to do that, it became a policy change. We decided to, you know, include it with policy. In order to change policy, we have to have a pre-briefing, a briefing, and then an action vote. Last week's workshop meeting was the pre-briefing. Everyone has received the information and the document to see what things in there we are looking at changing. When we decided to move forward with it with consent was when it was decided to go ahead and to, you know, to purchase not $34,000 worth of equipment, but just, I, I don't remember the cost of it, it was much less than that in order to do that. As far as the, in my opinion, as far as asking people to consent to be videotaped, we were, we discussed that that would be a part of the process. We are working on the process document, and that will be a part of that. The application will state exactly what is expected of each advisory board and also what will happen as far as the videotaping and all that. So, it will be publicly done. I, it's, it's in process, although we decided to move forward with it with consent. And I, as, as some of you have mentioned, are, are weary of us discussing, agreeing on something, and then it coming back up again because it's not what some people want. If we have agreed on it, I think we move forward. If the, if the consent vote was there, we move on with what we're doing. The advisory boards, and we discussed this in Thursday's meeting, need to be blended. Our community is blended. Our community is not all of one type of person or one look or one education level. It is blended. And we need to make sure that our advisory boards, those that are giving us information supposedly representing the community, that those advisory boards look like the community in all aspects. So, we discussed that at the meeting, and I won't go into that any further. The next part of that will be the briefing, and then we will have it for the hard vote. Okay. Talking about, oh, I did as well go to the Alva School to the luncheon. And yes, you all should do that at least once in your life. The banana pudding was wonderful. The, I wanted to speak on the, the search project, the Galisano project. I learned a lot about it. I really wasn't aware of the project. And what it is, is that students with special needs have, and I don't know if I'm saying this right, Dr. Atkins, that instead of... this right, Dr. Atkins, that instead of graduating with their class, they're able to stay on, they waive their graduation right then, and they're staying on for another, like, two years?
Yes.
Okay, so during that two years, then they participate in this project search. And what they do is go to Galisano and actually work. They work in different departments as interns. And like Ms. Morgan said, it is very heartwarming. Every one of these students stood up and gave a speech. And there are some of our, you know, gen ed students that couldn't have given the speeches as enthusiastically and as smoothly as they did. If you ever get an opportunity to visit this program, it is a wonderful program, and I thank you to all of those that participate in it. Ms. Giavanelle's comment. I see us as, at least I'll speak for myself, I was elected to be on this board for four years. I wasn't elected to run for office for four years. So in my mind, once I was elected and I'm here, my job is to work for four years. I am a novice at politics, never been in it, never done it before, and it's just amazing to me how political everything is. It's absolutely amazing that we do things or say things that are politically driven. I will go back as well to our word, which is cooperation, working together for a common purpose, and that common purpose is children. And I challenge everyone on the board, including myself, that any time you make a statement as a member of this board, that before you do, you think about it and ask yourself the question, is this statement, this comment, this behavior, what does it have to do with a child? If you need to get a picture or a face of a child and put it in your purse or your wallet, and stop and think before you say something. Is this benefiting a child? Is it benefiting the board and our work to help children? And I just think it would help us to focus. We don't have time to fight amongst ourselves because we need that energy and time and effort to fight for children. I understand we all have our own personalities, but somehow we need to bring it back, bring it back together. Alone, we can do so little; together, we can do so much. And I add, for children. I will, the last thing I want to say, well, first of all, on the workshops, I've noted, and hopefully Susan will in the minutes, that to do the bias training quadrant exercise to follow up with that, and I'm wondering if, while we have the auditors here, and Ms. Desmore and all, if maybe we need to workshop as a whole the moving parts of the, of the audit. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there, that maybe in a group, if we can all hear together the same things and ask the questions, to add it to one of our workshops, have the auditors here, have finance here, and just kind of take it apart so we all know the moving parts. Is that something that sounds feasible, Dr. Atkins?
Yes, I think so. I mean, just even going back to Mrs. Giavanelle's comments, I think that, you know, as it relates to the state auditors, you know, full understanding of what goes on, the audit, the auditors make the recommendation that the auditors make, and we are not, quote, "cleared" of that audit finding, what happens is that goes to the Department of Education. And so then the Department of Education reviews that along with the documentation. So I think, you know, full understanding, you wouldn't have these kind of disagreements. That may be just about communication. So better communication, and so we would be happy to, I think, work something, you know, put a workshop together where, so that, so the board and the public understands what the steps that we're going to go through with the Department of Education whenever we do encounter one of these audits. And remember, we also have the new audit, and so your DOE is working with the old audit, and now so we have the new audit, and I think this gives us an opportunity to step through that as well, so you know what to be prepared for as a board.
And I, I don't know if any of you did, I met with the auditors that are here, from the Florida auditors, and it was very, very helpful, if they even bring out some of the things that we discussed. I'm like you, I have to see it, you know, I've got to kind of lay it out there. And one of the interesting things was their discussion of, there's the Florida auditor and there's the DOE, and when this one says what they say, and when this one says, and it kind of gets all mushed up there together. But if we lay it out clearly, then I think that would help a lot of, in a lot of people's minds. The last thing I want to mention is, where's Ms. Robry? And I'll try to get through this part without tears. If you ever question or want to know what we're doing and why we're doing it, go on the last day of school to one of the schools and just stand there and wave goodbye to kids. I tear up about it because I remember when I was teaching and I wrote something to go out to the district thanking them for their work. But the thing you remember is, as you watch these kids drive away on the bus, some of them are waving because they're happy to be away from you. Others are waving because they don't have work to do for a few weeks. Others are crying because they don't have you for a few weeks. They don't have work to do for a few weeks. They don't have purpose for a few weeks. So if you ever doubt, just go and participate in that, and stand and watch the staff, and the staff feel the same way. Some of them are glad, oh my goodness, they're gone. And others are crying because there are students that won't return, and they didn't have enough time to get them where they wanted to get them. That's why we're here. Superintendent?
Yes?
Is it, I'm sorry, attorney first, and then superintendent?
Okay. No, Madam Chairman and board members, I do not have anything to report today. Back.
All right. Thank you, and how was the vacation?
Oh, I had a great time.
Wonderful.
I will tell you, I've never been out of the country before, and I was in Europe. And it's amazing to me, frankly, and this is just my conversation, how old things really are in Europe. I mean, you're looking at things that are, you know, B.C., before Christ, thousands of years old, and they're still standing, and people are living in them and enjoying them. And for those who are Game of Thrones, I was actually where they filmed some of the Game of Thrones castles and saw some of that, which I had no idea I was doing that until I got there and they told me that, but they showed me the filmed, so I know it's true. But I'm happy to be back into the United States because really, you know, when it's all said and done, you know, the United States is where we need to be, and appreciate it. So I'm happy to be here.
Okay, thank you so much. Superintendent?
I don't have any further comments this evening. Thank you.
Have we said it all?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Follow some of that.
I would really feel remiss if I didn't just sort of give my perspective on what Ms. Vaughn's comments. It never occurred to me to question the legality of the behavior of our staff, having an understanding of how investigations are completed. I think that watermarking is relatively common in investigations and in investigative techniques. I have 100% confidence that Mr. Brown enters an investigation with absolutely no, no preconceived notion of where that investigation is going to lead. I believe in my conversations with him, I've been able to learn that he genuinely is interested in finding the truth, and wherever that truth leads him is where he ends up. I have to say that I, I've never been in a situation, I've never been aware of a situation where an employee has had to request whistleblower protection because of the actions of a board, and I think that his activities were incredibly courageous, and I thank him for that. And those are my comments.
Okay. I do have to say that the thing that comes to mind about the whistleblower, though, is there were employees that felt they needed to do the same thing, and they felt that they...
But not with regard to a board member.
No, and I understand. I mean, I just wanted to add that the whistleblower was not just for, you know, one particular employee. There were others that stood there and requested to get that.
No, I understand, but with regard to a board member, this is very unique.
Okay. Okay, our next scheduled meeting is Thursday, June the 20th. There will be a board workshop at 9:00 a.m., as well as a briefing at 1:00. We are in the process of flowing into our agenda review and making our meetings more meaningful and our way of work a little streamlined, so that's why that is occurring. Before I adjourn, I will say finally make sure you find a picture of a child and remember my statement. At this point, having no other business come before this, to come before this body, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Nobody's speaking up. Everybody wants to stay? Okay. All right, Ms. Jordan is going to move in second. Okay, would someone like to second?
I sit second.
Ms. McTrick, did you say second?
No, no.
Oh, well, okay, we'll just stay here, guys, because no one's...
I sit second, Chair Gibbs.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. It has been moved in second, and please record your vote.
It's not there. It disappeared. Oh, there it goes.
And the motion passes 7-0, and have a good evening. Thank you to all the staff and everyone who came out.